Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 14th, 2023 meeting of the Lake County School Board. I'd like to call us to order. I will begin our meeting with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please rise for those. Well, welcome, everybody. I see members of the public and staff members who don't look like they're too tired from the first few days of school, so welcome, everybody. We'll start off looking at the agenda. Superintendent, do you have any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to it?
We do have a few changes and a few deletions. The agenda was revised August 9th and 10th with the chairman's permission for just cause to add items 8.20, 8.21, and 8.22, and to remove item 10.01, the HR personnel transaction listing. This item 9.01 was revised today, and the board has provided a copy. We're also pulling for no action this evening. That will come back later is 8.05, 8.10, and 8.13.
All right, excellent. I know that 8.20, we were going to pull for separate consideration, just so Mr. Weeks could give a little quick blurb or a couple of sentences about the Focus Messenger. But Board members, do you have any other items that you'd like to see for separate consideration tonight?
I'd like to pull 8.08 for comment.
8.08, all right. Got it. All right, how about some minutes? Superintendent?
All right, I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, July 24th, 2023, and the school board workshop, July 31st, 2023, and the special school board meeting and public hearing for the tentative budget on July 31st, 2023.
So moved. There's a motion by Tyler and a second by Bill. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. Let's vote. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That's 5-0. And now that we got all those housekeeping items out of the way, let's get to the good stuff. All right, who's coming forward for this particular item? Mr. Mabry?
Mr. Mabry.
All right, excellent. Come on down.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Member, Superintendent. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing one of Lake County's finest. Throughout Florida, there are thousands of school resource officers protecting our schools. Here in Lake County, we've worked directly with the Lake County Sheriff's Office and nine city agencies to ensure our campuses are safe. Last month, SROs from across the state convened for the Annual Florida Association of School Resource Officers Conference. During the conference, Attorney General Ashley Moody gave special recognition to one of our own as the Florida School Resource Officer of the Year. Here's a brief video clip.
All hallway heroes in my book, but today I would like to recognize a school resource officer that has really gone above and beyond to build these positive relationships with students and help the community that he serves thrive. Within two weeks of his new assignment, that spring creative charter of school this past year, school staff began commenting on what a positive influence he was having with kids, on what amazing interactions that he was having with the student body and teachers. And he always welcomes the students every day with a big smile, encourages them to talk with him. I think he even gives lots of miss bumps. During Hurricane Ian, he served as the full-time shelter security manager for the school. He received commendations from the principal for his service. He's also developed relationships with children where he has demonstrated a compassion and care for their well-being. He wants to see them succeed. In fact, in one instance where there was a field trip to our nation's capital, he realized one student put him a quarter and out of his own pocket, and I know you're going to get us because we know law enforcements are not paid what they deserve. And I keep working on that, but he paid for that young child to go on that trip out of his own pocket. This deputy also volunteers weekend hours with the school sports team, shows his support and interest in their lives, and provides a good example. I would like to congratulate our 2023 Florida School Resource Officer of the Year, Deputy Donald Roenbeck. Come on up.
I've been with the Lake County Sheriff's Office since July 20th, 2015. This is my first year as a school resource deputy, and I gotta tell you, by far is probably the best assignment that I have ever had. I come to work every day happy with a smile on my face, and I go home every single day with a smile on my face. And I feel that's important. They need that consistency because they're our future. That is the most rewarding thing to me. And honestly, first time in my career, I feel like I am actually making a difference in the community, and that makes me very proud.
At this time, I would like for Master Deputy Roenbeck to come forward to receive a token of our appreciation for representing Lake County as the Florida SRO of the Year.
Before you go too far, I think the board would like the opportunity to personally congratulate you and thank you for your service. I don't think there are any words to describe what you mean to us. And so you're a very proud principal out there as well, so thank you for being here, Wes.
No doubt, no doubt.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We have a few members of the public here, which is also great stuff. I love, thank you for coming out to participate in our meeting tonight. A few public input cards. Mr. Yocum will actually hold on to yours until we get to 11.01 because that one will actually generate a public hearing, so we'll give you an opportunity to speak, even though you may not have used the right card.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I make one comment?
Oh, yes, please.
I also would like to recognize, and you did, the principal, Wes Locke. It also should be noted that along with 40 others, he stands as another line of defense for the protection of our kids. So thank you, Mr. Locke.
Thank you. All right, first card tonight belongs to the Reverend Michael Watkins. Down. Mr. Mathias will grab the timer there for you. Excellent, welcome tonight.
Good evening, y'all. Certainly thank God for all the great things you all do. As you know, I attend a lot of the meetings, and I listen, and I celebrate with you when we have things like what just happened with the officer and other things through the year. I see that are great things that's going on in Lake County. I want to talk about something that's troubling to me that's happening in Lake County. Last year of our eight high schools in Lake County, three of them had the African-American Studies class. This year, we have none. None, unless something's changed. So we have none. And the teachers who have been involved, and I know one teacher had been teaching the class for about six years, and basically, the way it's set up is you got to teach the students that black folks benefited from slavery. That's basically the way it's set up. And I was thinking, who would want their wives and daughters raped, and their men beaten in souls that could, after that event in their lives, look at it and look at the benefits that they got from that? So I'm concerned that, and listen, I know y'all didn't make the rule, but also there was an AP class that was denied, but I heard it's been changed, that now they can take that AP class. And so if the AP class can be changed, that gives me hope there's something that can be done about African-American Studies. Why would we allow things to deny our kids to know about history? History has good things, it has bad things, but it's history. And now we have no school in Lake County that's offering that class to the students. And I hope it troubles y'all as well. I really do. So I know as a community, there's things that we got to do, and we're certainly going to do it. But if there's anything the school board can look at and help with this, we certainly would appreciate it. No teacher is going to stand before their students and with a honest face or in their heart, be to tell them that people benefited for being sold as slaves and the whole process of living as a slave. You learned a few trades and stuff, and that benefited you. Which one of you would think that would benefit your ancestors? I'm troubled in my spirit that Lake County now has no classes for that. Something's got to be done. Thank you.
Our next card belongs to Reginald Green. There you are. Come on down.
Good evening, and thank you for letting us speak. I won't repeat what Pastor Mike has said. What I will say is that African-American, or as we call it, black history is American history. And if you're going to teach history, let's be accurate in what we teach. And therefore, that means that if you're going to be balanced with what you teach and how you teach it, to say that folks benefited from being enslaved, there are slaves that are still in the world today. Are they benefiting from being in that system? I think not. Secondly, if you're going to teach one side of the story, teach the other side of the story. There are two sides to every coin. Let's talk about the benefits of the slave masters, how they benefit. If you're going to teach history, teach the whole history. Tell the story of what atrocities they did, and yet they profited. And yet, the country profited, and nobody teaches that and tells the truth. I'm concerned that we should be giving historical facts accurately, not opinionated, not there. There is nobody, I think, in this room or on this board that believes that folks benefited from slavery. In a free market, you have the same opportunity to learn trades, to do the same thing, but yet you were forced to do some things, and it just doesn't fly. So what you're saying to us as people in this community, we don't want to educate the whole truth. We want to just tell the partial truth or the truth that somebody hands down of their opinion. Opinions are great. Everybody's got one. But the truth will make you free. You'll know what the truth is. I come to say tonight that let's teach the truth, let's give the whole history, let's include history. Nobody is caught up on the idea of saying that we only have to teach black history or do this. I'm saying to you tonight, let's teach the whole history. How many classes are taught from grade school to middle school to high school? That includes the entire history, which includes African-American history. It includes Italian-American history. It includes Chinese-American history. But we don't teach any of that. Why? My question to you is, what are you going to do to even the playing field, to make equality an issue for whatever you do, however you do? Let's be equal. Tell the story. Tell the whole story. It is American history. Let's teach American history in its entirety. Let's not pick and choose portions. Teach the entirety of it. Then we won't have to have an African-American course. We can teach it all together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next comment card belongs to Michelle Jones Van Glan. Van Glon? Okay, I couldn't tell if this was an H or an N there. Thank you. Excellent, welcome.
My name is Michelle Jones Van Glon. I live in Claremont, and for the past 12 years, I have taught AP Psychology at Lake Manuela High School. Recent conflicts between the Florida Department of Education and the College Board had put the teaching of AP Psychology in the state in jeopardy. Ultimately, AP Psychology remains as a state-approved course, and the Commissioner of Education has twice said that the course could be taught in its entirety and consistent with state law. The law Commissioner Diaz is referring to is House Bill 1069, which says that when instruction about sexual orientation and gender identity occur in grades nine through 12, the instruction must be developmentally appropriate for students and in accordance with state standards. The initial concern that AP Psychology does not meet state standards is unfounded. The only standards that exist for AP Psychology are the ones established by the College Board. Since the course is approved by the Florida Department of Education, the standards are also approved. In a letter dated August 9th, Commissioner Diaz wrote, quote, "I want to make sure there is no room for misinterpretation." It is the Department of Education's stance that learning Target 6P within Topic 6.7 can be taught consistent with Florida law. Just this afternoon, the College Board sent out a statement saying that AP Psychology can be taught in its entirety in Florida. In light of clear guidance and support from both the Florida Department of Education and the College Board, it only makes sense for the school board of Lake County to once again allow AP Psychology to be taught in our schools. Teachers are already trained. Schools already have resources. Students were already expecting to learn the AP curriculum. At this point, the only people standing in the way of Lake County students learning AP Psychology is the Lake County School Board. Students in this county deserve the best education, which includes having teachers who are trained and prepared to teach high-level courses. These kids deserve the opportunity to earn college credit at more universities than is offered than by taking an AP Psychology exam. Instruction in our classes has not yet started. You still have time to provide students the best educational opportunities and curriculums available in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, as I mentioned, the other card tonight belongs to Mr. Yocum. We'll get to you on 11.1. All right, a couple of reports. We'll start off with our education foundation. Welcome, Carmen.
Chairman, School Board Superintendent. We opened Apple Mart for our new teachers, and we've had one Wednesday of Apple Mart, and a total of 118 teachers have come through Apple Mart's, and we've distributed $18,200 worth of supplies. Disney is sending us $25,000. I had a phone call right before I came for our culinary CTE programs this year, and we're also receiving 225 referee whistles, and I did ensure that they are in packages. They haven't been used. In July, we funded 12 teacher classroom grants totaling $22,300. Our board has allocated state-matching dollars to new teacher mentorship program, the culinary departments, the teacher intern scholarships, and the music equipment for Gary Middle in the amount of $95,300. We have collected over 3,000 pounds of school supplies, and the winner this year with the most weight was Skanska. Our new partner this year was Dan Newland, Attorney at Law. We still have several pallets coming from Disney and a monetary donation from Publix. And we have already distributed 2,000 stuffed backpacks to K-12, or excuse me, K-5, in all of the elementary schools. In partnership with Red Apples Media, we have formed a Red Apples Writers Club, and we have invested $18,000 for the purpose of training, or for the purchase of training bikes and instruction curriculum for the kindergarten classes at Beverly Shores, Rhines, and Leesburg Elementary. This past week, we had training at our Take Stock Conference on how to teach our mentors to adhere to the new laws affecting education. They work on a one-on-one relationship with our students, and so training will start on August the 29th for our mentors. Our next board meeting is August the 23rd at the district office at noon. And if you didn't hear, we had an incredible stepping out for education. Thank you, school board member Tyler Brandyberg. And Lindsay Blaze from Citizens Bank was the Miraball winner. Any questions?
Outstanding as always.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Myers, follow that.
Well, I've got nothing except if you want to have a discussion on AP Psych, if you'd like me to weigh in on some of that, because I know I've spoken to each of you, spoken to Mrs. Carnegie, if you want to have that discussion, kind of open air, that's...
Yes.
Okay. Just to give some background, I appreciate the comments. You're not wrong. So Senate Bill 1069 expanded the prohibition on gender identity and sexual orientation classroom instruction all the way through grade 12. On the heels of that, the State Board of Education also revised Rule 68-10.081, which puts the teachers' certificate at risk if they violate that law, which is now 1,001.071. And what it says specifically is, and this has not changed, is that "A Florida educator shall comply with the following disciplinary procedures. Violation of any of these principles shall subject individual to revocation or suspension of the individual educator's certificate or the other penalties as provided by law." And it says, "shall not intentionally provide classroom instruction to students in grades nine through 12 on sexual orientation or gender identity unless such instruction is required by state academic standards as adopted by Rule 68-1.09401, or as part of a reproductive health course or health lesson for which a student's parent has the option to have his or her student not attend." I understand what Commissioner Diaz has stated, and his statement was that it's the Florida Department of Education's stance that it can be taught, AP Psych can be taught in its entirety in accordance with the law. The problem we've encountered, and we've just recently through litigation, you know, learned that relying on informal guidance from the State Department of Education is not a wise decision. The State Department of Education acts through formal rulemaking, and that rule is on the books until they change that rule. It was my recommendation to both superintendent and the board to protect the teacher certificates and not put you all at risk by not opting to teach AP Psychology and offering alternatives which still give students the opportunity to obtain college credit and that the teachers that were teaching AP Psych still obtain their stipend. So that's the background of, do y'all have any questions on that?
No.
No, no questions.
All right. It's okay, if she wants to reach out to me later, is it okay to have a conversation?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Give her your contact information, we're done. I'll talk to you. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, brings us to our consent agenda.
All right, I recommend approval of items 8.01, 8.03, 8.04, 8.06, 8.07, 8.09, 8.11, 8.12, and then 8.14 through 10.01.
So moved.
Second.
I think 8.20 we were gonna pull.
Which one?
8.20.
Well, for separate consideration.
Oh, sorry, I missed, we had so many tonight, I forgot that one. All those minus 8.20.
All right, very good. I don't think there's any question on the superintendent's recommendation, but if anybody's confused, speak now. All right, very good.
So moved.
There's a motion by Tyler.
Second.
And a second by Bill. Any questions or comments? All right, not seeing any of those, put it to vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries 5-0. And that brings us to the items for separate consideration. I think 8.08 would be the first one on that list. Bill? That was...
I don't know if any of y'all had any problems getting on Board Docs or being able to access the attachments, but it was quite a challenge for me. It seems to have been worked out because I was like, we'll just pull it up now. On that one, we have an opportunity for, we're selecting a hood cleaning company. Anyone that knows anything about the restaurant business knows that when you have a fire, it typically is in the ductwork and spreads throughout the building from there. Not, I don't want to overexaggerate because schools don't create near the grease that restaurants do, but it still is important for just the basic competency, that the ducts are clean on a regular basis. So when I went to Board Docs and you look at the scale, it says 43,000, 45,000, I think, or 43,000, but the range in the bids are from 69,000 to the 23,400. And the spread is just troublesome to me. And so without knowing more about what the scope is, I went through it today. Mr. Carr and Mr. Ward were kind enough to walk me through, and it still didn't satisfy my genuine concern about the competency of this organization. And I'd like, I won't be able to vote for it as it is, but I'd like to be able to table it and let them do some investigative background on this organization. And then the other bid, which is in Claremont, I don't know, I didn't know this company until today, but at $30,000, they handle Orange County schools. I contacted two of my installers for hoods. They have a stellar reputation, and I would hate for us to discount to a company in Ocala and not really look at the merits of some of an organization who's the founder and general manager, but live four kids in Lost Lake Elementary School. Let's give a fair opportunity to a local business and understand the real difference between these numbers. So that's that.
I do just want to mention that the, this particular company is currently doing the work, and so we've not had any issues with them. They've been with us for a short period of time, but they've...
Two months.
Yeah.
And school's been closed, so really hard to have a problem.
Well, they're doing the work, they're doing the cleaning. And just remember that these are bids, and the bid system requires that we go with the lowest bidder, so that's why they were the lower one. But I do agree, there was a huge spread in the proposals that were submitted, but as required, we went with the lower bid. But I'm happy to do whatever the board would like.
James, if I can, to be clear, can we, is there any legal ramifications with going with the third lowest bid versus like the second lowest bid and just getting into that subjective side of things? I mean, I think Mr. Mathias' points are valid, and I agree with him, but I don't want us to get into a bid situation where we do something out of turn.
Without looking at the solicitation, what went out, what we said we were going to do, the best course would be to table it until I have a chance to look at it.
I'd be perfectly happy with tabling it until we can...
So we actually don't have a live motion on the floor at this point, so could the superintendent just not give us a recommendation or have a... Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
We don't, we don't actually have a, this item's actually not on the floor yet. There's no motion. So I guess we would need a motion, a second, to bring it to the floor, and then we could move to table it.
Okay.
Really quickly, would you mind sharing what you find with everybody? Because I wouldn't, I don't feel educated enough on this conversation to make a decision. So I appreciate the recommendation to table it and whatever you find, if you would share with all of us, I'd appreciate it.
It will either come from me or Mr. Zachary.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you need a motion to bring it to the floor?
Or could the superintendent just not make a motion or a recommendation to approve the item yet? She'll bring it back to us.
Yeah, the recommendation would be to table it then.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I recommend that we table this item.
All right. So moved.
Second.
Second by Bill, second by Stephanie. Any objections to tabling? So 5-0 on tabling? All right, very good. You got it. All right, we'll bring that one back. And then 8.20, we pulled for separate consideration, as this is a pretty monumental and big shift on how things are going to happen. So Dwayne and I were talking a little bit and thought, he thought it might be worthwhile to give a couple of sentences or a little blurb about this particular agenda item before we vote on it.
Good evening. One of the things that I think is a challenge is that Lake County schools and the teachers of Lake County schools have been pretty innovative in trying to find ways to communicate with their parents and other stakeholders, but that has led to a lot of different applications doing that, which for some parents is a little bit of a chore when you're getting one communication stream from one application and another one from another. So what this is basically designed to do is that, and I think it will be in a place of probably the most convenience for teachers, it'll be in line in the gradebook, which seems like a natural, organic place to communicate with your students, and it will basically just be an extra module of the Focus Student Information System that we're in the, well, what feels like 10 years, but the third week of implementing fully to some extent. And so what will happen is that as we go through that, the goal was to get this on the board and then start training as soon as possible before the year, the school year gets too far away from us. We felt like we were taking a little bit of a wait. We felt like we were taking a little bit of a wait-and-see approach on the implementation, but we think we have oxygen to go ahead and continue to aggressively push this forward, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
All right. Recommendation?
All right. I recommend approval of Item 8.20, the Focus Messenger Assistant Service.
There's a recommendation from Superintendent with a motion by Tyler and a second by Molly. Any other questions? Closer, sound travel faster. Third? We don't need thirds. Any questions or comments on that one before we vote?
Thank you.
Yes, and you know, a couple of highlights that I thought about this particular item, because certainly it's going to be a shift for many teachers when you, when you change to a different sort of guidelines on messaging, is that there's some, some items that I think a lot of folks don't, don't necessarily consider in the public records side of things, that when these messages are all being sent out through various apps, we don't have any record of what those are and, or, you know, if somebody inadvertently sends the wrong thing, it'd be hard for us to get that back, or, you know, student data that goes out incorrectly or to the wrong people, or, and then, of course, the data sharing component, right? That state law requires us to have data sharing agreements with all these companies, and there are many messaging platforms out there that are just selling student data that we don't have a privacy agreement for. So many benefits to reining in through Focus, and so I appreciate that. As we're ready to vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? And that carries 5-0. With that, we come to our lone discussion item, which I believe Mr. Attorney is going to generate a public hearing.
Yes, a public hearing for final approval of new policy 6845, the evaluation of the district auditor. Is there anyone here who'd like to come forward to speak to this item?
Come on down, Vance.
Thank you. Vance Yocum, I'm on the Internal Audit Committee, and I just wanted to thank the Board for processing the changes in this rule that I think were more, added some sanity to the process. I think we just had an old process that had just sat around, and, and nobody really realized that it had some issues. So I just wanted to support Tom Mock and the committee in, in making those changes. Also, just to tag on, unless the lawyer pounds on me with its related topic, is the, they need a workshop for the Internal Audit Committee. I think that's, the request has been in process, and there are several topics on there that should be discussed. I won't go into them now. Finally, if I can, is that the attorney and some of the members here in the committee were talking about this AP class. I'm not going to talk about that, but it brought up the issue of liability for content in books and publications. Just so you know, there's a big movement across the country now to sue librarians.
Vance, go ahead.
For putting content like that, and I'll just stay there, because you're getting antsy.
I just wanted to be germane to this particular topic, but come back next week and talk about anything you want.
I forgot to set the timer. Four minutes.
Next week.
And I haven't even used up my time.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come speak to this item? Seeing on, I feel appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. Superintendent?
Recommend final approval of new policy 6845, evaluation of the district auditor.
All right. There's a recommendation with a motion by Bill. Thank you, Stephanie, for the second. Any questions or comments before we give final approval of that one? Not seeing any, let's give it to a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? And that carries 5-0. All right. That brings us to the end of our actionable portion of the agenda. Superintendent, your report, please.
There were a couple of letters of condolence that were sent out that I would like to mention. Kajah Elmore is the daughter of Cassandra Elmore. She's a lead driver liaison in the Transportation Departments of condolences to Cassandra's family. Laverne Griffin, she's a retired Lake County educator and mother of Michael Dozier, a teacher at Groveland Elementary, so condolences to that family. Also condolences, condolences were sent to Kathy Stone's family. She's a retired bus driver in the Transportation Department. Deborah Turner is the mother of Anika Days, a content area coach at Groveland Elementary. And Dorothy Dunston, mother of Charlotte Williams, the assistant principal at Mount Dora Middle School. And Nicholas Johnson, a teacher at Taverries High School, so condolences to all of those families. I just want to thank everyone for a great start to this school year. I've visited probably about half of our schools so far since school started, and everyone said this was one of the smoothest starts they've had in quite some time, and so we're just glad to have everybody back and things up and running so well. And I always want to thank our Transportation Department. This is such a very heavy time for them as, with a lot of new drivers, lots of new routes, and just appreciate parents being patient with us as we, buses are running a little bit later, as they're learning new students and new routes. But as I visited the bus lot and spoke with Mr. Fender on Thursday, as the phones were ringing like crazy, they, he said that he has 11 drivers that are getting ready to graduate from the class, and he's got 15 more getting ready to start the class, which would cover, as long as everyone stays, and we're hoping they stay, we should have all of our routes covered very soon. So that was not the case last year, and I want to thank the Board for increasing salaries and prioritizing it in that area, because it has made a difference, and it's great to have some fabulous bus drivers in, back on the streets taking care of our kids. Also want to thank all of the community sponsors that hosted back-to-school events for our teachers and our faculty and staff. They were amazing as always, and I know they left feeling very much appreciated. And so just very quickly, special thanks to the chambers of South Lake, Leesburg, and Umatilla, as well as the City of Mount Dora and Mount Dora Community Trust for hosting those events and various other ones that were happening through, throughout the district. So thank you to all of them, and thank you, everybody, for a great start to the year.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Board members, comments on your minds? Bill?
I really want to just comment for a second. Deputy Rowenbeck, is that how you pronounce it? Yeah. You bring a lot of pride, and one of the things that, that a parent should expect is that when they kiss their child in the morning, they come home safe. So it's men and women like you, and the other men and women and that are safe school officers that are administrators within our schools, that I sleep well knowing that that is going to happen. So thank you very much. Thank you for being highlighted and highlighting Lake County and bringing pride. So to the school year, I got no complaints, like no phone calls, no emails. Amazing. So Superintendent, to you and to all your staff, very well done. And that's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Tyler.
Got one more letter of condolence. Skelly Morris, longtime Taverries educator, recently passed away, I believe, yesterday. His brother Danny Morris was a longtime teacher at Leesburg High School and now teaches for Lake Virtual School. Morris family has been around Leesburg for a long time, gave a lot to our school system over the years. Skelly ran Kids College at Lake Center State College for years and years and years, just a wonderful man that'll leave a legacy for a very long time. So wanted to add him to the list as well. Not to reiterate anything the Superintendent or Bill said, a lot of great points there. Also got to attend a career and technical education event at Leesburg High School last week, put on by Lake County Office of Elevate Lake and the Lake Economic Area Development Project, and really understanding how important our CTE teachers and guidance counselors are, and really solving the problems that we have in this county as it relates to workforce development, high wage, higher earning jobs. So that was a really good day to spend there, a lot of good information, a lot of good collaboration with our teachers and staff. The back-to-school bashes were great. And last but not least, again, Master Deputy Rowenbeck, thank you for what you do. Thank you to all of our school resource officers and school safety, Mr. Mabry, Alex, Mark Palmer, Cindy Page, the whole team. You guys do a fantastic job, and we appreciate you very much. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much. Stephanie?
Ditto, 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 like all the things, right? I wanted to say congratulations to Superman. Surprised it wasn't mentioned, but if you guys didn't get an opportunity to see Mr. Brandyberg in action, he did a phenomenal job representing Lake County schools at stepping out for education, represented us very well, and booked buff in your Superman outfit.
Impression shirt, yeah.
Fantastic. So thank you for stepping out for our students and doing that, and to everybody else that participated as well. It's always a really good time, and I didn't think I was going to be able to go this year, and I was, and it was an excellent event. So I would also just like to add, if you've not been to, to a safety drill, so as a mom with concerns and having young kids in schools and all of the wonderings about the drills and what it feels like, and the sense of security, having seen one done in your school was exceptional. You guys have that school, it's safe, and the kids are happy, and it was phenomenal. And so thank you for letting me come and observe it. And again, thank you for representing Lake County, bringing positive attention here. It was very, very well done. I wish Mr. Locke was here to tell him similar, and his assistant principal as well, they're just, they are a commanding force for school safety, and it's really, really, it's real, as a parent in our schools, it's really, really nice to see. So thank you very much. I wanted to tell the group that's here about the social studies standards. I would love to talk to you guys afterwards. I watched the entire State Board of Education meeting when they approved those standards as well. Have some additional information, and I would love to hear some thoughts about that as well. I would love to hear from you guys also, if you wouldn't mind just hanging out with me afterwards. And that's all, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to Reverend Green and Pastor Mike. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and sharing with us. I think it'd be a good idea for you to stay behind with Mrs. Luke. I think that unfortunately, these are the times we live in. Your comments are very much appreciated, and certainly they're taken to heart. This is something that we have to work together on, so thank you again for coming out. Got just a couple of people I really want to give a shout out to. You know, there are a lot of people that work behind the scenes, and we don't see them. I'd like to shout out Charlotte Rooney. She is a route manager in charge of ESC buses, doesn't get a lot of notice, but I had a problem on the first day of school with a parent, and I couldn't get an answer, and she picked up her cellphone that I had from six years ago, and within 10 minutes, the problem was taken care of, and the parent was happy. So shout out to Ms. Rooney. I'd also like to shout out Mr. Stein. I understand that he opened up Taverries High School on the weekend for Reverend Green and Pastor Mike and some of the Lees, the Taverries Police Department and some other people had a back-to-school bash there, and he was very hospitable, and they shared with me their gratefulness for this. Also, to Mr. Carr. He doesn't know it, but he's one of those people that's always working behind the scenes, and I understand our internal auditor has a new home with a view. I understand it might even be one, Mr. Dodd, that you might want to go and partake in. So thank you, Mr. Carr, for making that happen. I'd also finally like to shout out to all the principals in District 4. We know that a lot of organizations have come together in other parts of the county, and they do a really big back-to-school bash for their teachers. Such is not the case in District, part of District 4, in the Taverries area. But those principals came together, they went out, and they collected donations, and they had a luncheon for their teachers hosted at Taverries High School. Once again, Mr. Stein, the Superintendent and I were there. It was very, very well done. I think that they did a great job, and I believe that they need some recognition for that, so I'd like to let them know how much I appreciate that. All the schools that I visited were doing quite well, and I'm very pleased to say that I think our children are off to a good start, and it's going to be a great school year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yep. It's been a great start so far. You know, a district of this complex, how many moving parts and how many departments there are and how many students there are, there's a lot that has to go in to make it smooth, and I just think you all have done an exemplary job of pulling that off. It's, it's been a very smooth start as well, from, from my perspective, and, you know, I now have five kids in our, in our schools. This is a monumental year. I've got a senior and a kindergartner, and so with five kids now, I get to really see the gambit, and you all have really impressed me very much. Couple of shout-outs I'd like to throw out there as well. Couple of my high schoolers were able to take advantage of the high school in my, my particular district, doing some schedule changes ahead of school. There was a schedule change event where kids could come out instead of having to wait till the first day to submit those, create a lot more peace of mind on those, those schedules for the seniors. So that was amazing, and of course, we'd be remiss without giving the shout-out to Dwayne and the whole IT department for pulling off what a successful transition. Bill, was it slightly better than the Skyward transition?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. Thought so. You know, I think we were all in a tizzy, and, and, you know, I was seeing some chatter in some of the Facebook groups about this transition, folks having trouble getting on there, and I passed those along, and the whole IT department was quick to figure out how to, how to smooth out that process for those folks, and I always, I always enjoy the opportunity where my own account becomes a little bit of a guinea pig, always happy to lend it for the, the public service. And so, so thanks, thanks for solving that and making that much easier for our folks. This was, this was, I think, one of the best meetings I can think of in a very long time, and it's not necessarily because we talk about any sort of topics that bring any sort